Are you ready, Darwin?
I'm ready.
My name is Meredith Smith. I'm the chairman of the Lake County Planning Commission. It is April 19th, 2016. We're here to consider a comprehensive plan amendment- urban growth boundary adjustment, application file number 15-043-CPA-UGB. The applicant is Red Rock Biofuels LLC. Jeff Manetek, president, from Port Collins, Colorado. I understand that Mr. Manetek is on the conference call. Let us know if you can't hear us, sir. This is a big building with a small microphone.
I hear you're coming through loud and clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is a joint meeting between the Lake County Planning Commission and the Town of Lakeview Planning Commission. And we'll run them more or less one on top of the other. That is to say, I will be the chairman and I will do a certain action on this between the Lake County Board, and then we'll turn it over to the chairperson of the Town of Lakeview Planning Commission. He will do the same thing. So you'll just have to be patient if you hear a lot of repeated verbiage.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
By the urban growth boundary agreement, it's proper for the Town Planning Commission to make its deliberation acting prior to that we pass it on to the county.
Okay. Thank you. Anyway, we will- anyone who wishes to give evidence for or against, we'd like you to have been signed in over there. This is a quasi judicial hearing. Failure to give testimony either in person or in writing severely limits your ability to appeal the decision of this particular commission.
Meredith, we're actually in a legislative hearing.
Sorry?
This is going to be a legislative hearing.
A legislative hearing.
Yep, and that's how it was advertised for.
So the legislative part will be when the commission- the county commissioners-
And town council.
So what are we doing exactly as far as the title goes?
Yep, your job will be to make recommendations. Both planning commissions here will be making recommendations.
Okay.
Onto the-
Just be on the safe side. I want to say that there are no firearms allowed in this building. There are no cell phones in this meeting. If you have a cellphone that you have to have on for emergency reasons, please mute it. If you have to answer it, please leave the meeting and carry on your conversation in the hall. The exits, the two doors that you came in down in the lobby, there's another one down, and make a hook in the hallway that way. If this is not quasi judicial, do we need to swear anyone in? All right?
No, I think we still can. We still expect everyone to do everything that we say to swear.
Okay, well, would you like to take care of this at this time?
Sure, I'll be fine. Anyone who's going to testify today, will you please stand and we'll make sure you're understanding what we're expecting of you.
Raise your right hand.
Mary, you gonna speak it all tonight? Mary, you gonna speak it all? You're getting there, huh? All right, you guys swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
Yeah.
Everybody?
Thanks, Darwin. Before we go any farther, I would like to remind everyone here that we're not here to debate whether or not Red Rock Biofuels has a good business plan. Also, we're not here to debate whether it should be where it's proposed to be immediately south of the Town of Lakeview. It- that has already been approved by the planning director in January. So if you have testimony that you'd like to give regarding the changes in the urban growth boundary adjustment, that's what we'd like to hear. The appeal period for Darwin's decision is over. Were there any appeals, Darwin?
No.
Thank you. I would ask now that the chairman of the Town of Lakeview give his opening statement, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Tim Harris, and I'm the presiding official for this hearing. This hearing is a quasi judicial hearing authorized when required by R.S. Chapter 197 and 227, and by Lakeview Ordinance Number 782, known as the Planning Ordinance, and specifically the Development Order, which establishes rules for the public hearing. Until such time as we have a problem, I will conduct this hearing informally and substantially as follows. The applicant who has the burden of proof and his or her representative will make an introductory statement including testimony as to why the proposal or other relief should be granted. We will then listen to any comments by the attorney, which should be made part of the record. Persons who are present in support of the application will be heard next. Correspondence in support of the applicant application will be read. Questions then may be directed to the proponents through the presiding official. Persons who are present who oppose the application will then be heard. Questions then may be directed to the opponents through the presiding official. The proponent will then have a chance to respond to the objections. The opponents will then follow- oh, excuse me. The opponents will then be allowed to respond. The members of this commission and town attorney may then direct questions to the applicant or opponents to assist at a rising of the decision. The presiding official will close the hearing, and the council will begin to deliberate. The council will make a decision or continue its deliberations to another time. A copy of this procedure may be handed to the applicant at this time. The application submitted and handed to the audience in lieu of formal reading of this procedure at the hearing.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. This is a legislative hearing rather than a quasi judicial.
Okay. I think for the sake of brevity, unless there's an objection from the Town of Lakeview, we'll have our planning director, Darwin Johnson, give an overview of this application.
Thank you, Meredith, and thank you all for coming. I know it's, you know, a matter of great concern to many of you, and I- we all respect that and the process in which we're going through, and I really appreciate your time on being part of the process. Okay, the Red Rock Biofuels, as many of you know, have been, you know, looking at coming to Lakeview for some time, you know, for as many as three years, maybe longer. They certainly have done their- their job as a business to look into coming here and all the processes that they would have to go through there, and in many of those steps, as many of you know already. This process tonight is to review an urban growth boundary adjustment to swap out lands that are inside the urban growth boundary with lands that are outside the urban growth boundary. These are displayed on both monitors, on the screens, as the Red Rock site is in red there, and the property that's being proposed through this legislative hearings process is in green. These- the area that's in green is currently within the urban growth boundary area, which is poorly shown, but there is a black line also. The red line is overlapping it. That red line is the enterprise zone boundary, which was also amended, I believe, back in September or so of last year. I don't have the exact number, but this- Red Rock has made this application to do this, and the county has also undertaken this legislatively, meaning that there are properties certainly within the exclusionary that are not currently owned by or under lease option by Red Rock, but the county does feel at their best to not leave pockets and holes, but to exclude that whole area. You see that it was subdivided many years ago, and many of those lots have been consolidated, but there are remaining lots in holdings, you can call them, that are owned by others that the applicant is looking to probably purchase. But again, the applicant is going to speak for themselves on this matter. Both the town and the county have presented staff reports that are very short, but they reference the findings of the applicant in this case, and they will be, you know, most likely they'll be something that these boards can use as their review, moving this on to both the board of commissioners and also then the town council. So I have nothing further, but I would love to turn now the time over to the applicant and consultant. Jeff, you're on the phone. Anything I've said that was incorrect, please correct me, but Craig Stone and Mary Dan are both here as consultants for the Red Rock.
Well, great. Darwin, this is Jeff, and I'll just be brief, especially since I'm on the phone. I just- I want to thank both the county's planning department and the town's planning department for spending their time on the Red Rock project this evening. We do genuinely appreciate it. I know it's for Darwin and Red Rock in particular and others. It's, you know, it's been a long process that, but, you know, we're kind of coming to hopefully fruition here, and we do appreciate everyone's time on it. We have two other folks in the room today. Mary Dan, our very capable project manager, who many of you know, and of course Craig Stone from Craig Stone, who's been a terrific help to Red Rock throughout this UGB amendment process. And with those just brief introductory remarks, I'd like to hand it over to Mary and Craig for anything to add, and as always, I'm available for comments or questions, and I'll remain on the line here, but I'll put it on you so you're not getting any feedback. And when anybody has something for me, just let me know, and I'll come right back on the line.
Thanks, Jeff. For the record, my name is Craig Stone, S-T-O-N-E. Our offices, those would be the offices of CSA Planning, are located in Metro Oregon at 4497 Brown Beach. As Jeff indicated, Mary is seated behind me in the audience in the red blouse. I want to begin the substance of my comments with a bit of background. An application was pulled together by Red Rock a couple of years ago, and application was made to Lake County for the purpose of their establishing a biofuels plant on the property. And I think probably most of you have a longer history and know as much about that permitting process as I do, but on January 15th, 2015, the board of commissioners, after hearing testimony, evidence, and argument, approved Red Rock's biofuels plant as a conditional use permit in the county's A2 agricultural zone. That application was not appealed. Roughly a year later, maybe 11 months later, on the inquiry from Jeff Manetek, the application was deemed to be ongoing, in other words, it did not expire for a reason that A, an extension was granted, and B, substantial progress on the site had been made since the time of the original approval. That was monumented by way of an email communication between Mr. Manetek and county planning director Darwin Johnson, and that email correspondence is a part of the record and appears as part of applicant's exhibit eight. On June 24th, 2015, the Department of Environmental Quality, that is the Oregon Department, approved a standard air contaminant, air quality discharge permit. That has been approved. The biofuels plant in all ways is really a beta complete. It has been approved, and that approval was not appealed. Before you tonight are a proposed urban growth boundary reconfiguration, but it is not for the purpose of authorizing the biofuels plant. It has already been approved. The sole purpose of the urban growth boundary reconfiguration is to accommodate the extension of public sanitary sewer and public water service from the Town of Lakeview to serve that property. Now, why does that need to occur? It's very- it's very clear in the urban growth management agreement that the town and the Lake County entered into a number of years ago, it provides a number of things. First, annexations can occur unless a land is first within the urban growth boundary. And secondly, sanitary sewer and public water owned by the Town of Lakeview cannot be extended outside the town's corporate limits and urban growth boundary unless the land is first included. So the purpose of these land use applications has as its end objective obtaining public sanitary sewer and water service, and that's about it. Oregon law provides a legally sanctioned approach to remove land from an urban growth boundary in order to take other land in. Now, urban growth boundaries can be amended in a few different ways. This is one way, and it's called reconfiguration, where instead of simply adding more land to the urban growth boundary, you're first removing certain land and in its place adding other land. In pursuant to Oregon law, that has to be a like-for-like transfer, and as I'll explain as I go on, it is like-for-like. It is an appreciably equivalent amount of acreage. The land to be included has 61 acres. The land to be taken out has 58 acres, while they are not exactly equal. Oregon law also provides that cities, counties are not held to an unreasonable level of precision. In other words, it doesn't have to be exact, and we believe the difference between 61 and 58 acres is, while not exact, it creates a like-by-like transference of those two sets of properties. I'm going to spend the rest of my time this evening just talking about what are these four land use actions, and what comes to you this evening are four separate applications, four separate actions that we're asking you to take as part of this whole consolidated filing package, and Darwin has been so good as to agree to help me put a few slides up on the projector as I go through these. First, and let me focus on that first, is the urban growth boundary reconfiguration. Darwin, could you put up Atlas Page 6? And scroll. Okay. The- this is sort of a before and after map. The one on the left is the current situation, where land is presently within the city and the plant site is outside. And after the reconfiguration, that shaded area on the left map will become the land that is outside of the urban growth boundary, while at the same time including the land that is occupied or to be occupied by the Red Rock biofuels plant. That's it. That's kind of it in a nutshell, but there's three separate and related matters that come about. The next- well, let me pause there for just a minute. The urban growth boundary reconfiguration requires action by both the town and the county, okay? Both entities have to agree on whether or can't proceed. The next applications or land use matters involve next, the county comprehensive plan. And Darwin, Atlas Page 11. That illustrates what the comprehensive plan of the county looks like as it applies to this area with the exclusion lands, that is the land to be excluded presently designated for agriculture. And the lands to be included, excuse me, the lands to be included are designated agriculture; the lands to be excluded are designated by the county as commercial. This next land use action would simply reverse that. So the land taken in, the biofuels plant, would be under a commercial county plan designation, and the land to be excluded would be under an agricultural county plan designation. Exactly reversed. It's a like-for-like transfer. Now, on this matter, because it is modifying or amending the county's comprehensive plan, only the county and its decision makers culminating with the board of commissioners has final authority to approve that, and the town does not. The town does not hold any jurisdictional authority over the county comprehensive plan. So when it comes to amending it, it is a matter exclusively of that of the county's. The same is true for step three, and step three is simply exchanging county zones, where the land to be included is presently agriculturally zoned A2 and would upon being included be zoned commercial C1. And the reverse would be true, simply reversing the zoning that applies now to the inclusion land and swapping it with that for the exclusion land. Again, it's sort of a like-for-like proposition. And that is the third step. And just like the county comprehensive plan, the county has final and unilateral authority on that, and the town doesn't have any jurisdictional authority over the county zoning either. It is the county's property. And finally, and this is shown on the way it is in existing form on Atlas Page 8. Darwin, if I could get you to put that up. It shows that this property has a C1 commercial designation, and that it is covered by the town's- it's an overlay plan designation, and it is called industrial park. In the- in the reconfiguration, we're also changing to take that designation, commercial and industrial park overlay, and apply it to Red Rock's plant site. And then with respect to the land presently within the urban growth boundary, once it is removed, then the town has no jurisdictional authority, so we not talk about how the town would treat the land to be excluded, because after the reconfiguration, the town would lack authority on it. So this last step, unlike the prior two, where the county has final authority on this last one, which would simply apply the town's commercial designation and industrial park overlays, that is within the exclusive jurisdiction of the town. So when we finish, four steps. The first one, urban growth boundary reconfiguration, that's town and county, all have to agree and adopt. On the second, the change of county plan designations, and the third, the change of county zoning, and those are exclusively county matters. And the fourth, which simply is applying the town's comprehensive plan designations, that is currently county matters. We have agreed to stipulate to a couple of items. The first is if the town and county act favorably on these applications, which are being handled per natus legislative amendments, applicant will cause the preparation of adoption ordinances for review and approval by the county. And secondly, the property owned by Red Rock, which is approved for its plant site, has substantially more than 61 acres. We are proposing that the urban growth boundary go through their property, not along a particular property line, and that is permissible, but we are agreeing that if you want us to formally partition that land, we will do so as a condition that would be attached to these approvals. Mr. Chairman, I have concluded my remarks, pretty much just covering what we are asking for, without going into the burden of proof, the approval criteria and the standards that apply, and they are somewhat laborious to get through. We have addressed each and every one of the approval criteria, and it is before you in the first bound document and the first 71 pages of that, where we cite every approval standard, the facts that go to it, and the conclusions of law that we ask be adopted in support of this application. And with that, I'll close and ask if you have questions.
Let's start with the Town of Lakeview. Any of you ladies and gentlemen have questions of the applicant's representative?
I'll have it right now.
Do you?
I'm right now.
No question from the Town of Lakeview. How about the county's planning commission? Any direct questions for the applicant's representative?
Good. I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Why- why the trade and why not just include expanding their urban growth boundary?
Yeah, it was just a choice in how to proceed, but let me back up and tell you this. When you expand an urban growth boundary, you have to show a need for additional land, and in our inventory of what's available in town, there's a pretty substantial inventory of existing commercial and industrial lands. So rather than saying, "We need more," we're saying, "We already have enough, but we will remove some of the land that we already have in order to include new one." And it creates a much newer focus for possible error. Urban growth boundaries are a pretty tough proposition when it comes time to amend them in. Prior to our meeting this evening, we listened to a presentation from officials from the state, and they've indicated that there are a number of urban growth boundaries being amended as we speak. I know we're involved in a couple or three of them right now. They are as difficult as anything in Oregon law, and report as a very substantial burden of proof that under the show that you're out of land and you need more and you need more in these categories. And that's pretty tall work, particularly when Lakeview has a boundary, I think, that's been established and acknowledged for a very long time. And early on, the state did not look as carefully to the amounts of land being included, and some communities ended up with quite a bit more land than they might justify under the present circumstances today. And I would suggest to you that Lakeview probably falls in that category, and as a result, you have a substantial amount of employment land, land that's commercial and industrial that provides an awful lot of freedom for people looking to undertake enterprises in your community.
Thank you. Any other questions from the county? Any other questions from the county commission? I think we'll hold questions from the audience for you. Mr. Stone may call upon you to respond to a member of the public when they're giving testimony if they want to ask you a direct question. We'll just handle that as it comes, or if that's satisfactory. Thank you. I think it would be an appropriate time now to open for public testimony. Anybody that wishes to speak for or against this application? Not the project, the application. As we've rendered this around for just about an hour, half an hour, would you please come forward, state your name, and tell us your thoughts as briefly as possible?
Sarah Bunton, and I live on 95594 Geyser View Lane, if you are.
We'd ask you to speak up.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't believe, when I look at this document and they talk that it's like-for-like, it isn't like-for-like. We're taking agricultural land and going into commercial or an industrial company. They are not commercial. The definition of commercial land is completely different than industrial land. Industrial land is a zoning designation for areas used for industry. These are businesses that typically manufacture, process, or otherwise generate products that are sold to commercial businesses later. That is who they are. It isn't a one-for-one. We do have industrial land, and I don't think it's a like-for-like. I don't think they've made a case that it's like-for-like. So that's number one for me. When I go through, I had a hard time looking at, I talked to Darwin earlier about the industrial park overlay that they talked that that's going to be on this part. But he indicated that that's just been submitted to the state. It's been adopted by the city or the town, but it's not done yet. And so my question, is it done? Because Darwin thought it hadn't been done. So that's a question for the city. Another one is that I didn't see in their thing a permit for storm water, for drainage, they said. Because our town doesn't have drainage or storm, storm drainage, they would have to put a pond out there for all that to go into a pond, all their chemicals and everything. But I didn't see a permit from DEQ about it, which I think it should be part of this, that that it would be okay. Because even if you annexed in and you got the town, the town doesn't have the storm drainage in it. So that's a concern of mine that we don't, we're not prepared for this at all. When I think about the air quality part of it, yes, they did got a DEQ permit, discharge permit. But where I think there's a lag and where I have a concern is that there's letters that commissioners have signed, town council people have signed. And they said they wouldn't really open up the urban growth boundary because Lakeview, yes, we were non-attainment, but the federal government hasn't put us in there yet. So we're a sustainment one. But even though it looks like it's one-for-one, you are extending that urban growth boundary out. And the commissioners and everybody said they wouldn't do that so our air quality wouldn't be impacted. And I think it is going to be impacted. So those are primarily mine. I have some other concerns that there isn't the wood that they are saying in the project. And again, it goes back to the DEQ permit that they say they have. But in the hearing at the DEQ, they said they were only going to use primarily gas because of the winter months. So the permit isn't for gas. It's for wood products, but it isn't for gas. And when they start talking 40 and 50 loads of wood, which it has to be green, they're not going to pick, I was looking at FedEx and who they're going to sell to and Southwest, and on the website they have, they say how wonderful this is going to be, how they're going to pick up debris and pine needles and different things. They're not going to do that. It has to be green-cut wood. And if you look on the Forest Service website, there is no thinning projects like two years out. So where are they going to get the wood? I really have a problem with them baiting us because we really want something to do with wood products, but it isn't going to be that.
But I'll caution you now, ma'am, that we're not talking about the difference.
No, but this is part of their--
No.
This is part of their conditional use.
I beg to differ. You're going off way off into left field. If you have a problem with DEQ, go after them. But we don't have, we have to leave them to handle their portion of it, okay?
Well, it has to do--
You can't deal with emotion. Let's deal with facts.
It's the urban growth boundary. They are extending the urban growth boundary, and they haven't taken that into consideration.
They're exchanging, yes.
Well, it is bigger. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Did anyone from the Town of Lakeview Planning Commission just respond to what the last speaker said? She did have a question there.
I did.
I can, Mr. Chairman. Sarah, I wasn't quite clear with what you were asking about.
I had--
Is it a code amendment to allow the industrial use as a permitted use? Is that what you talked about?
So I think what she's talking about is what Craig Stone described as step four, the fourth action to be taken, which is the industrial park overlay zoning, which I still have shown up on the map. Town Council last week initiated by resolution, starting the process that will go, you know, the 35-day notice to DLCD and a change to that boundary map, which will include the inclusion property. But again, that's a further step, not really part of this process, although it's something that Red Rock would wish us to accomplish at some point.
Right. And I didn't see it in the book and maps.
Yeah, Ray, Town Council, part of Town Manager.
I didn't swear in, but I sort of tell the truth, pretty much. We have an industrial park master plan already. It doesn't have a set of uses. However, we do have an industrial park master plan. And this would expand the master plan, whatever it is, to cover this property. And it would then not cover the property that's going to be excluded. So we do need to expand our master plan under step four that Craig mentioned to cover this property. We're dealing with another part of that and the other action that we're talking about. But we do need this property to be in the master plan, as I understand it.
So if I could ask you a question? So it was adopted, was it sent to the state for approval for that raid? Do you know? Or--
We're talking about two different things.
Okay. Well, what is it in the book that I read then?
Notice was given to the state of Oregon.
Okay. So it is in the state of Oregon right now? Okay. That's what I'm clarifying, that we're talking about it and it hasn't really happened. And it's in the book. Okay.
Are we talking about that?
The speaker had a concern that perhaps the town's designation of what that inclusion land will be is maybe not as fits the definition. But we'll leave that up to the Town of Lakeview to handle when they handle that and actually name it or zone it. Would that be satisfactory?
So just for clarification too, and just to review what Craig Stone has already said, that this packet of information includes all four steps. And so it discusses each of the four steps. But what we're talking about specifically tonight is only one of those four steps. Those other steps will be talked more in depth at other hearings. Especially, you know, this one that we're talking about will be handled at a separate hearing in which just the town will undertake.
So the number one step we are doing then is just the like-for-like? Or what is it then? Now I don't understand because we went through four, so--
Go ahead, Craig. Maybe I missed a point too, I guess.
Again, for the record, Craig Stone, I believe it has been noticed in the matters that we put together in support is for all four steps, which are dependent on the proceeding. The first one, which is the reconfiguration of the urban growth boundary. The other three, as I explained earlier, but all four should be under the ten and a part of this proceeding.
So to further answer your question, Sarah, there is a public hearing scheduled before the town planning commission on May 9. It was noticed to DLCD. And that's for purposes of amending the town's industrial park overlay zone to allow permitted uses.
Is that going to be in the paper? Or is that just--
It should be in next week's paper.
This week's.
Anyone else wish to give testimony in this matter?
Excuse me. Good evening. Thank you very much for holding this meeting and for taking a public testimony on this important matter. My name's John Paul Williams. I live at 1985 North Place, Miss Tucker, Portland, Oregon.
John, we'd like you to speak up.
Oh, sorry about that.
Not just for the microphone, but in general.
Hang on, I'm gone. I'm gone.
I've got too much of this time. First of all, Chairman Smith, I'm a little confused to mention that consideration of alternative sites for Red Rock might be part of this hearing. But the act themselves says there must be an alternative site analysis as part of this proceeding. And in fact, they looked at a dozen other sites and rejected every one of them, which indicates that maybe there isn't adequate land available for industrial development at this time. And perhaps land should be added to the urban growth boundary. This application is also being processed as a legislative decision. And we demerred from that. We believe this should be handled as a quasi-judicial decision. It meets those criteria, initiated by a private developer, a result in a decision, and so on. The most important issue is allowing additional opportunities for public comment and keeping the record open. We're very concerned that a quasi-judicial hearing, or excuse me, legislative decision won't allow for that. As you may know, the luminous documents have been made available only recently when respectfully asked for an extension of time in order to submit further comments after we had a chance to review or fully digest these materials. It's not really appropriate to talk about this as a swap of equal parcels. If you look at the application for the parcel to be included, it's 87 acres. The parcel to be excluded is closer than 60 acres. So there's a disparity there. And the way they're dealing with it is they're sawing off 20 acres from the parcel that's to be included and leaving a rump area out there, 20-odd acres. So what you'll have is you'll have an area that's commercial or an urban area, then you'll have a commercial area, then you'll have an agricultural area. It will be a leapfrog approach to the zoning. It will be inconsistent and won't be contiguous. And it's important that I brought up, why I brought up the issue of them examining alternative sites is because it is required, and in fact, the site to be excluded is more suitable for this project than the site where they are proposing. It's closer in, it's, the developer says they want to assist in establishing access to natural gas, and that would be directly adjacent to that industrial, the city's industrial park, where there are other companies I'm sure would be overjoyed to share natural gas access with Red Rock. So we're very concerned that the possibility of the exclusion site as an alternative that's more acceptable was not adequately discussed or considered. The traffic, compliance with the goals for traffic, we're very concerned because the letter that they submitted from ODOT discusses 40 trucks a day coming to that site. But there have been submittals made to other agencies such as DEQ, which talk about as many as 65 trucks coming to the site. We need to know which number is right, which number is accurate, and assess whether that meets the Lakeview's goals and what kind of mitigation might necessarily be required, including, for instance, paving that gravel road. In conclusion, I'd like to submit a 20-page written document repaired by the Craig Law Center on behalf of myself, Robert Waits, and the Northwest Environmental Defense Center with steel with all these issues and far greater depth and more expertise than I can provide up here at the podium. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Stone, do you have any rebuttal at this time?
One of the points made is that this is not a like-for-like transfer because it is farmland. Yes, but what is being proposed is to remove the inclusion land from farming plans own designations, put to place that designation on the exclusion lands. So it's kind of a wash, 58 versus 61 acres. It is a like-for-like transfer in terms of the amount of acreage and in terms of simply reversing, switching the designations and zoning that applies to the inclusion lands and putting them on the exclusion lands and vice versa. It is in all ways a like-for-like transfer, except one might argue that because one tract is 58 and the other is 61 acres, that somehow that is not like-for-like. And in my opening remarks to you, I mentioned that Oregon law does not require an unreasonable amount of accuracy. And we believe the transference of 58 or 61 acres is reasonably accurate and sufficient to carry the burden of proof in this instance. It was argued that the land is not commercial, it's industrial. Well, the land is what the land is. It is shown as a commercial designation on the land to be excluded, and it would be a commercial designation then on the land included. As to whether the biofuels plant is a permissible use, a part of that is wrapped up in the code amendment that was alluded to earlier by others with respect to the notice that's already gone to the state. The passage of that code amendment makes biofuels production. All other aspects of biofuels is already a permissible use in the town's C1 zoning. a permissible use in the town's C1 zone. This simply makes clear that production is also a permissible use. Ms. Bunton will find that there is no permit from DEQ for storm drainage. I don't believe that one is necessary in this instance, but to the extent that one is, it will be a requirement of development and does not require that either the town nor the county say, "You've got to go get this permit." It is a state permit. Promises were made, one testified, that the town and county officials would not expand the urban growth boundary. Again, this is not an expansion. This is removing some land and taking other lands in. I suppose it's an expansion to the extent that there's a difference of three layers, three acres between the amount of land to be taken into the boundary versus that to be excluded from it, but that's not really an expansion. This is kind of a like-for-like transfer. Ms. Bunton also testified as to air quality permits and that somehow Red Rock did not obtain the correct air quality permit. I think that's not right. In the record and as a part of the package in our Volume 1 and various exhibits, is the air contaminant discharge permit dated June 2015. Also testified too is that there is no feedstock, in other words, the regdebreed from public and private forest lands would be consumed in order to produce biofuels. Other research shows a pretty substantial amount of really biofuels available in this part of Oregon. I will tell you that that is really not relevant to this proceeding, but in the next breath I want to say, my find is getting ready to invest a whole lot of money on the expectation that there is to be biofuels that it can process and it has made inroads for public and private timberland holders, and we believe that sufficient feedstock does exist for this facility. Mr. Williams testified that alternative sites weren't really a part of the hearing. Well, they are. In order to do an urban growth boundary reconfiguration as is proposed here, there's something called the Oregon Priority Land Statute that comes into play, and it says, "When it comes time to change urban growth boundary, you take in these lands first, and these lands next, and these lands last." And our alternative sites identified eight or 10 alternatives in the surrounding area within the whole community of Lakeview, and we examined each under the state's various priorities, excluding some when they missed a priority. And what we've ascertained is this land is the best alternative, and alternative sites were in fact included. Our exhibit 3, which occurs somewhere around, it's not about the 73rd page, the findings document goes through page 71, and right after that is exhibit 3, that is the alternative sites analysis, and it along with the maps in the atlas is in fact a pretty comprehensive examination of the alternative sites that exist. And I believe that was all the testimony that I heard that might be part of the rebuttal from me. If I can, Chairman, if there are questions of me at this point, I'll respond.
I don't have a question, but I do have a statement. This is Sarah Bunton. The reason I say that about the wood products, I don't say that lightly. I came to Lakeview, I worked for Forest Service, I did all the mapping for the roadless areas I've done, I've worked in silver culture. I do know this forest, and there isn't that much of there when you start cutting 40 to 50 truckloads a day. So I would like to see your documentation that says that, but I know because I've worked there. I just want to make that statement. It's just not from my mouth or thinking I don't know what I'm talking about.
Anyone else would like to give testimony?
My name's Scott Dealman. I'm the regional representative for the Department of Land Conservation and Development. My coworker, John Jennings, is here, and I'd ask him and be glad if he would correct anything I say if it's wrong, he's been with the department much longer than me. I just wanted to make a statement about how DLCD fits into the process, just to make sure it's clear, because there's a few things that have been said about the state's rule. As Craig said, there are four different processes going on. We're involved in one different than we are in the others. As far as the UGB, the work number one that is swapped, or the reconfiguration, because it's over 58 acres, it's considered to be, it's called process in a manner of periodic review. And as such, it's a local decision to start with, and then it does go up to DLCD for review by our director and the LCDC, our commission, for final approval, which is then appealed to the court system if there's an appeal. The other three processes, we're a participant, where we can be like anyone else in the room, we can raise issues, we can appeal the process, but it's a local decision, ultimately decided by the city and county that can then be appealed to Aluba. As far as our involvement so far in this process, we're also involved in what's called the Governor's Regional Solutions Team. The Regional Solutions Team has economic development as one of its primary goals for any county that are involved in and for the state. And so as part of that, as part of the Regional Solutions Team, we have been proponents of the project as part of the group and the whole. DLCD, in of ourselves, because we ultimately under our commission reviews the decision and then makes the final decision on the boundary, we can't take a position necessarily, but we have been working closely with staff and with Red Rock through this proposal. We considered things like real expansion UGB, and found that that would be troublesome. So we've come to this solution, which has been presented to you, and we, at this point, have had no word flags, by "we" I mean staff, not our commission, but John Jennings has been involved, I've been involved in discussions, our urban UGB specialist, Gordon Howard in Salem, and our economic development specialist, Tom Ho, have all been involved in the process. And at this point, we felt comfortable with what's been presented as a solution and a means forward for this UGB amendment. John, are you here if you have any questions you'd like to ask?
Any questions for this gentleman from the state?
I do. How do you justify the like-for-like that they talk about?
Yes, I don't really have anything to add to what Craig said as far as this goes. It's a similar amount of land, similar quality of land, can be swapped out. So you currently have a certain amount of EFU land in the county, you certainly have a certain amount of commercial land in the city. At the end of this process, you'll have the same amount of commercial land, same amount of EFU land or farmland.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to give testimony at this time? If it's all right with the chairman of Lakeview Mining Commission, I'll close the public portion of this meeting as far as testimony goes.
Mr. Kieran?
Yes, ma'am.
Could we deliver a committee to the public hearing open for additional testimony and another meeting?
If we make a decision tonight, the next public meeting as far as we're concerned will be the county commissioners. You have some steps to make.
We have some public testimony, that 20-page item that was presented this evening that we haven't had an opportunity to review to determine what that testimony is that might reflect on a recommendation that might be made.
So you feel that you're not prepared to make a decision tonight, or would you like to read what's been submitted?
I'll have to read what's been submitted.
Okay. How long do you think that would take? 20 minutes?
How long do you think, Chairman?
Well, in that case, will adjourn?
I guess I'm not comfortable with it.
No, and you should be comfortable. Will adjourn until 8:30?
No, no, I want to read it some other day.
Will adjourn until 8:30 and give the Lakeview Mining Commission time to absorb the submissions that have been presented here?
Did we only get one copy of that?
Unfortunately.
I'd like to make copies real quick.
Okay. This meeting now stands adjourned until 8:30. Sorry if anybody wanted to see their favorite TV program at night.
It's all DVR'd anyways anymore. Yeah.
To order please. Continuation or consideration of the applications. Red Rock, Lakeview. For the comprehensive grant. First of all, a comment was made earlier by Mr. Williams about the short notice as far as Red Rock's submission, which can be measured by the pound, I might add. Very substantial submission. Mr. Williams, were you in town today?
Yes, I was, sir.
Did you give this report, your 20-page report, to Darwin in advance?
No, I didn't.
You realize what you've done to this process. We could have all read this before this meeting started and considered what you had to say. So you're kind of like the dog, almost ate your homework, and we're not impressed. However, because of the points you draw up, and especially the, whether it should be a quasi-judicial or legislative hearing, we are going to defer any further testimony or decision-making until April 25th at 6:00. That will give the applicant, especially a chance to read your submission, Mr. Williams, and consider any rebuttal you might have. It'll give you more time and anybody in your camp to further digest the extensive report that Red Rock submitted. In the meantime, both the planning commission for the Town of Lakeview and the Lake County Planning Commission will be consulting with counsel as to whether this should be quasi-judicial or legislative as far as the hearing goes. And once we get an answer to that, we will meet and we will proceed whichever way learned counsel instructs us to proceed. Are there any questions on what I've had to say?
Can you make that a motion?
Not just yet.
I'd like to apologize for not providing these materials earlier. I didn't realize that it would serve the purpose of expedite your decision-making by providing it this afternoon.
Just, I'm sure even yourself, your experience, you know that a one-page letter of objection is one thing, you know, so it's on the record. But to bring 20 pages, that late in the game, I understand that you're feeling what you're proposing is hard to help, and I'm not putting anything away from it, I just, just a lesson for the future.
Thank you.
No, so, we are going to adjourn. I'll have a motion to adjourn. And then, the Planning Commission for the Town of Lakeview can go first, to the date that we already decided on. Go ahead, sir.
I propose a continuation of the hearing till April 25th at 6:00 p.m. at the town hall to allow consideration of written testimony presented, level testimony from the applicant and consultation with the town attorney.
Six and seven.
The town hall.
And that's the town hall?
Here, the town hall.
Here, or go?
Yep. Like that, and we'll have it here at the courthouse.
How was the second motion?
Second.
Motion passed.
You can move on?
I did.
Thank you.
Let me do a second thing.
Mr. Chairman, a call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Vote is unanimous? Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion now, remember, committee commissioner.
Would you continue hearing on April 25th?
6:00 p.m.?
April, thank you.
April, April 25th.
April 25th, 6:00 p.m. at the courthouse. A second, or?
A second.
Call the roll, Mr. Darlin?
John?
Yes.
Ginger?
Yes.
Meredith?
Aye.
Les?
Yes.
Jalen?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Regardless of what legal counsel has to say, we are not going to do this whole thing over again. We're going to pick up where we left off, so be prepared.